You don't want to have that in turn like the rest of us guys?
He does. So maybe just before the meeting gets started, um, we'll introduce a motion to. Great. I'd like to call this, uh, meeting of the Madison Board of Education to board. It is, uh, seven thirty five. If you could please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance, excuse me. In the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, for the nation, my good God, and the resolve of the literally just as strong. Right. Uh, thank you very much. Um, and now one of my favorite parts of the meeting, um, which is a welcome. The pressure is on.
Yes, just me today. I agree.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. I was so, so I used to get to you first. Second favorite. Sorry. The first part would be the public participation and anybody in the audience or online who'd like to speak as well from this come up. Statement of interest and we can go from there.
Yep. We just ask if you're online and you'd like to speak, raise your hand. You'll be called upon. If you're in person, state your name, address. And we do limit comments to three minutes. Um, and it should not be expected that the board or administration will respond to comments at this time, but you can be contacted and follow up with your request. So do we have anyone in person who'd like to speak at this time? Yes, come on. We moved the table, but you can just hang out there.
Okay, great. Thank you again for letting me be here. So again, my name is Tiffany McGee. I'm from ninety six Sandalwood. And my daughter attends Daniel Hand High School. I recently found out about their policy that each person can use the bathroom that align with their gender identity. I have much compassion for students who are confused about their gender. I believe that providing a unisex bathroom for their use is a great solution. However, allowing biological males to use the female restroom, in my opinion, is not a good solution. I want my daughter to feel safe and comfortable at school. Sharing a bathroom with a biological male is not a situation that I want her to be in. I emailed Dr. Cook with my concerns. He said that Daniel Hand has hall monitors outside of every bathroom to ensure that everyone is safe. However, I told him that as a woman, I would still feel uncomfortable sharing a restroom with the biological male, whether there was a hall monitor outside or not. A restroom is a very private place. A female should not have to deal with the presence of a male in their restroom. And even bigger problem I have with Daniel Hand allowing students to use the bathroom that aligns with their gender identity is the affirmation that the public school is getting to the idea that males can become females and females can become males. Affirmation of that gender ideology is controversial at best and dangerous at worst. YouTube is filled with videos of detransitioners telling their heartbreaking stories of botched surgeries or the regret they have for making a decision they can never change. One story is of a female named Alyssa who had gender-affirming surgery, removing all her female reproductive organs. Yeah. And she did that when she was eighteen. Years later, she said, I can't have kids. I'm left to accept the scraps of the life I could have had. I could have had a full life, which now I need to mourn. I was young. I was sad. I was impressionable and I thought this would fix everything. It's just so bad. There's no fixing this. There's no making it better. I don't see a path or a way to go forward. As a woman who thought I was trans, I went all the way, as far as I could go. And then I woke up realizing I made the biggest mistake of my life. This woman, I believe, was a victim of gender-affirming care. The public school should not support an ideology that can cause such pain and devastation to a young person. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to speak yet? Is there anyone else in person who would like to speak? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
So it's just me and I, like I was saying, um, well, Grace is at soccer, so I'll be taking her place. So looking back in the back of the week, um, the PSATs took place for tenth and eleventh graders. And I was told that they went really smoothly. Thankfully, I had been have to participate in them this year. And there's no technical mishaps with the computers or anything, which is always, I know, an issue, like a worry for most. Um, also, the athletic department is thriving, which is no surprise. Not only are we continuing to win, but also we have really great sportsmanship. And I think this is back to back that we are able to receive the Michael's Cup in the C S A C I A C. And this is just a sportsmanship award that is recognized to only a couples, um, a couple of schools in Connecticut. So it's a great honor, especially having it twice in a row is probably like not really heard of. I'm looking beyond in this upcoming week, the tenth is already the midpoint of trimester one. I feel like I just started senior year, so I can't even wrap my head around it. And then on Thursday is a mental health wellness event. So this is basically to celebrate National Mental Health Awareness Day. And there's going to be a lot of student choice throughout the day and a lot of breakout sessions to kind of celebrate or, um, be aware in whatever way they want. I will hopefully be taking the cooking therapy, um, thing. So that'll be really fun. And, and if it goes well, they're hoping to make this like a tradition, doing it again this spring. And if everything runs smoothly. Another tradition that we're kind of starting up again is the German exchange students. They're coming on Friday. And this is the second year in a row that they're coming. It's a really well, uh, well-received experience. Everyone who's participated has thought it was great. And I'm really happy to have them back again. They'll be soon. And then next week on Tuesday is a parent conferences, which students are so happy about because it's a half day. So I know everyone's excited for that little break. Um, and then even more beyond information for homecoming just came out. And this is going to be on the November second this year, which is a bit later than usual, but I'm sure it's going to be just as well attended. And it's going to be just as fun as always. And then I know you all know about the Blue Ribbon Award, but a lot of students, you can know if the students would actually know how like great this award was, but there's been such good student feedback and there's like an episode on Tiger Talk about it. So a lot of people kind of actually know what it is. And to kind of push this even further, we're in the process of planning a way to celebrate for the students. Maybe like a pep rally or something, but there's more to come on that soon. So.
Awesome.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments for Brooke?
Any question? So a little off topic, but, um, when you are in like the, I forget what they're called, the NAPPA at the high school with their.
Advisory.
The advisory.
Yeah.
So, um, I know you have like led activities, but what has been your experience at the high school regarding students' cell phone use?
Cell phone use? So this year is kind of the second year, like they kind of put the stricter, um, policy on. I think last year, no one really followed it, if I'm being honest, but this year they implemented it a lot more. And at least in my experience, I know I'm taking a lot of harder classes. That might also contribute to the fact like to what I'm seeing. But it seems to be working really well this year. A lot of students, like a lot of teachers have had them put their phones on their desks at the beginning of class. And you can't take it until the end of class. So it avoids people like going to the bathroom and taking the phone and stuff like that. And I think it's kind of, everyone thinks it's pretty fair. Obviously, students, teenagers want to use their phone, but they understand that they have to, uh, have some bounds. So having it during the hallway time and having it during passing period and lunch, I think people are satisfied with the amount of, um, phone use that they can have.
And what do you see at lunch? Do you see most kids just on their phones? Or are you seeing a lot of social interaction?
Um, well, in my experience, I do orchestra, so I only have twenty-five minutes of lunch. So definitely my group were, were eating and talking during that twenty-five minutes. But I think some students that have like the full hour, I'm sure that there's probably more cell phone use, but I'm just not in that environment to really know for sure.
Thank you. I was just curious, you know, what your experience has been. I have heard that it's, um, stricter policy this year.
Yeah.
Alignment with our policy. Um, and I just wanted to see if you're seeing that and how the students were reacting to it.
No, the, from last year to this year is definitely, it's being enforced a lot more. And I don't see much, many people disagreeing with it or not, maybe not screaming with it, but going against it. So.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, next up is Dr. Cook's report, superintendent.
Yes, um, thank you, Kayla. I wanted to introduce the board to Joshua Stenavich. Um, Joshua joins us in the technology department. And he's, uh, here tonight, um, working with Zo's, um, so we make sure we have a backup for, um, technology. He had run in board meetings and, uh, Josh is doing a lot of work with the website and other, um, aspects of the technology department. In the board's packet tonight is October one enrollment. So as the board is aware, the official count for the state farmer's education we submit is every October one. Um, we are pretty much on schedule in terms of what was predicted. You will see, as we've talked a few times, that kindergarten was a little lower than we, um, had been projected only at Ryerson, though interestingly enough, uh, Jeffrey has a hundred, um, kindergartners this year. And, um, Ryerson is, you know, under seventy. And so we, um, you know, saw a little bit less than we, we had expected. So we had to have some smaller class sizes. Um, we did have many families go through that process. So we're not thinking there's going to be a huge jump next year, uh, but we will certainly be, be tracking that. But as I said, we were right on, on projections and we're starting to see, you know, the, um, elementary grades get, you know, higher enrollment as, uh, we, you know, continue to decline, um, pretty much at the, at the bottom of that decline at the, at the high school, um, where we're, where we're at right now. Um, we'll continue to keep the board updated on enrollment as we go through the, the school year. Um, just a quick update on the, on the calendar as the board knows, we took the, um, April break off the twenty-five, twenty-sixth calendar because we have found out that the learn area, and so we work within the learn area for our school calendar to do our best to be, uh, in conjunction with the districts around us. We know what a major disruption that can be. If we have a different spring break or different breaks than, uh, those districts around us, not only for, um, athletics and, um, families. When we have, uh, teachers that, that, um, you know, live in, uh, a different district than, than ours or vice versa. So it can be very disruptive for, uh, us. So we will look to, uh, get an answer from the learn area, which, which, uh, weekday are. Uh, we've taken it off, as I said, just the, just the spring break portion and, um, have not received any concerns. We've spread that information out. And, uh, um, you know, we'll, we'll finalize that as soon as we can. If it is a change, we'll come back to the board. If it's the same, we'll notify the board and continue on with the already approved board calendar. And one more note, we gotta turn this over to our, um, facilities director and construction, uh, manager. But I just wanted to, um, clarify a comment I had made, um, last board meeting on, uh, Ryerson PTO. I had indicated that they were working on spending down funds. They are spending funds certainly for this school year, but their intention is to send some funds on when the new school, um, new school configuration comes in. So they will be sharing, you know, a, a good start as they move on and their students move on to, uh, Brown School. And very similar story for, uh, for Jeffrey from, uh, my understanding as well. So, um, just wanted to, to make sure that there was no misunderstanding in terms of how that was working. And, and, uh, we are thrilled, as we said at that meeting, and we always say about the support from our PTOs for our schools and the experiences they give our students. So, um, thank you to the Ryerson PTO. And, um, we are excited to share with you. I'll ask, uh, Peter and Ben to come forward. I believe the board has met Ben Whitaker, our new construction manager. If not, this is, uh, that is a group, Ben. And, uh, everyone knows, uh, Peter Anderson by now, but we are really excited about the, um, changes to the Poulsen project that have occurred over really the last, um, months. We're headed by Peter and Ben. And, um, they've done some work with the, um, building committee for that and have that approval. And I know they presented to the, um, board of selectmen. And so we are in a, uh, really good place and, and really exciting work. And we asked the board tonight and share where we're at.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Um, let me give you a kind of a really high level brief view of what was going on with the Poulsen project. Uh, as you know, the Poulsen project was designed to, uh, revamp the auditorium and provide a brand new HVAC system into the school. Therefore, providing cooling to the entire building. That was one of our number one goals. Our, what, uh, upon soliciting our construction manager and going through with our, um, Colliers, which is our owner's rep. Our numbers were coming in roughly nine million dollars over budget, which was making this task, uh, with virtually impossible. Uh, with Ben coming on board and conversations occurring between the two of us, Ben came up with this, or Ben was really the, you know, no pun intended, the architect of this plan. And we revamped or he revamped this entire project where not only are we, uh, achieving the goal of cooling one hundred percent of the building, but we're also adding in a few extra bonus projects, uh, with the possibility of removing the roof of the entire replacement of the roof out of the SIP and into this line item. It's, it's roughly a six million dollar savings versus a nine million dollar deficit. So what's happening is we are going to be completely revamping and abating the auditorium, which was really getting pared down to almost nothing. We will be completely revamping the gymnasium with, uh, sanded new floors. I'm going to let him get into details on this. Uh, I don't want to take this underweight. And then we'll be air conditioning the entire building. There was a pleasant surprise that was discovered just recently, uh, on the rooftop units. And we're not getting into too much detail. It really showed us that we're, we have a system that is providing a fresh air mix into the school. So it's, we're not just, you know, we're keeping the existing ventilation system, but that ventilation system turns out to be much better than we thought. So with that, I'm going to let Ben take it over and he's going to explain to you the important phases of the project and how we can off the back end save something if there's something that falls out and goes over budget. So with that, Ben Whitaker, will you take over?
Thank you. First of all, nice to meet everybody and see everybody in one, one place. I've had the pleasure of meeting a couple of individually, but like I said, I haven't presented as a group yet. So, um, thank you for the invitation and for the opportunity to, to present, uh, what we're calling the recalibrated, uh, Poulsen Middle School Improvements Program or Project here. Uh, so just a little, uh, a little bit more history before we get into where we're headed. So, uh, as Peter explained, the, the goal of this project was to air condition the whole school and make some improvements to the auditorium. That's what the referendum was based off of. Um, but the, when that project went into the design and execution or the execution of the design, um, what it became was essentially gutting the HVAC system that existed in the school and starting from scratch. So basically taking the, the existing footprint of the school, acting like nothing existed and putting in a brand new HVAC system. Um, fine to do. That's certainly one way to approach it. Uh, but again, we, we were left with close to a thirty million dollar project with, you know, twenty-one million dollars to pay for it. So what do we do? Uh, it started going through a value engineering process. When Gil Bane was brought on board, they were instrumental in, in starting to do this value engineering. And what that means is you start to scrape pieces of the project out or reconfigure pieces until you get to something you could afford. Uh, throughout that process, a lot of the things that were really critical pieces of the project from the beginning, uh, such as, as, uh, restoring the auditorium and, um, you know, providing cooling in the gymnasium. Those types of things were, were getting lost and it was being done at, because we were putting in this system that required scrapping everything that existed now and, uh, what I would call a major surgery to the building. So we want to look at this in a little bit different way because anytime you spend money on a building, especially twenty million dollars on a building, the customers of the building, the building occupants, the community, you, you expect a change in the look and feel of that building. And for twenty-one million dollars, we really weren't getting that at all. Said, how do we organize a slate of projects that will really change how that building, uh, how the customers of that building interact with it? How do we do the most good? How do we use that twenty-one million dollars to go to the most good, not only for the physical plant, but for the people that actually use the building? Uh, so start looking at this a little bit different direction. One, one thing was we go to a one-for-one replacement of the fifty percent of the building. That's cooled already, approximately fifty percent of the school. Um, instead of changing that entire system, we're just going to replace the system with, with, um, similar units, obviously new. Uh, the ones up there now, about thirty years old, they're past the end of their useful life. And two is adding air conditioning to the portions of the building that aren't fully cooled right now, um, but simplifying that system. Um, we're using, we have in the design now, what we, uh, what's called a V R, duck split VRF system. So if you think about the type of system that you may have in your house where you have a, a small outdoor unit and an indoor head kind of hangs on the wall. Um, it's a commercial version of those. They're usually done through ceiling cassettes. They're not on the wall. They're overhead. And the outdoor unit services between ten and fifteen classrooms instead of one-to-one. So you're not going to have these condensers all over the outside of the building. Uh, the downfall of that system gives you great control, gives you a nice cool buildings. Uh, just went through a project where we put two hundred and fifty of these into a district. You are not changing the ventilation. The building is still ventilated. It's ventilated the way it has ventilated since the fifties and sixties when these wings were built. Uh, but you're not changing the way the building is ventilated. You're, or those portions are ventilated. You're just getting cooling. Uh, what that does is that knocks it down. So we were looking at, say, out of that thirty million dollars, about twenty-nine of that was going towards this HVAC system. So you spend twenty-one million, twenty-nine million dollars, you get an air-conditioned school. This way, we're spending about five and getting a fully air-conditioned school. Uh, that fifty percent of the building, as Peter mentioned, that's air-conditioned now, has a modern ventilation system. It's doing its thing. It's operating just fine. It's providing the fresh air it was designed to, to provide. Um, no reason to really change that. Uh, no reason to just throw all that out. So, uh, there are a couple of other reasons to start to go down this approach and I'll walk you through all the projects. Uh, but just another reason to do a phased project approach versus this major surgery. And that's the impact to the building. So when I came on board in July, the conversation was really surrounding, do we shut this building down for an entire year? Do we move everybody out and do this project? Or do we phase it over the course of two or three summers where you're constantly mobilizing, demobilizing and remobilizing, which is extremely expensive to do? Um, or are we doing a lot of this, you know, anytime you phase an occupied building, uh, you're going to have issues with, with, again, the, the customer experience. So we said, how could we do this with, with, with disrupting the operation as little as possible? So the, the plan that we have now is a four-year slate of sub-projects where we try to maximize the benefit of this funding to address not only providing cooling to all the educational spaces, but renewing the building envelope. That's the roof and the windows. And fully renovating community and school use spaces like the gym and the auditorium, not just HVAC, um, actually making it look and feel like a new space. Abating all the hazardous building materials in both of those locations, um, as well as flooring and select ceiling areas in the school and refreshing the classrooms. So it's a diverse mix of projects. Think of it as, as we made a, a, a four-year capital plan, like we would do for an entire district or portfolio for, for just this building. Some of the benefits of this approach, the school has kept fully functional during the school year. No moving of students and staff necessary during the duration of the four-year plan. Also, and we'll walk through the spreadsheet of how these costs layer on top of each other, unanticipated cost increases in conditions to one individual project early on or in the plan doesn't stop the entire project plan. Downstream projects can just be rescaled, postponed or changed as necessary. So for example, right now, we had twenty-one million dollars. We designed a project. It was thirty. That is basically, that means stop. You're not doing anything. With this, year one is about eleven million dollars. We'll get into the years. Uh, we know we could afford that. We get year one done, we move into year two. If year one ends up being more expensive than we thought it was going to be, that's just less money for years two, three and four, but it doesn't stop the whole train. We're still improving the building. In the meantime, we might just have to reconfigure projects or move projects out, uh, downstream. Another really important one that this leverages the existing design work that's already been done. Uh, so we are getting the project finished, but we spent about one point two million dollars or a covered one point two million dollars on this project. We don't want to throw that design work away. So we want to use the existing project team and have them fully engaged into year one. So years two through four, we could run internally, just like we would any other capital projects within our department, but year one keeps that team together. Um, like Paul was, we're keeping that team and, and, uh, we bring in additional support for specific projects down the road. But right now, the team that we brought on to, to do this thirty million dollar project basically just gets reconfigured down to more like an eleven million dollar project. We've had that conversation with, with Colliers, who's the project owner's project manager or project rep. Um, Gil Bane, who's the construction manager and, um, Um Gil Bayne, who's the construction manager and uh B L, who's the designer. We've had all those con- those conversations with them separately. And then we just reinvigorated the pro- the team working together. Uh we're starting to meet every two weeks and I'll get through that on implementation. Uh so everybody is on board. Uh they realize the products, their their pieces of product's gonna be much smaller. Um but it's something and it's actually going to happen, which is the important part. Uh very important, the products are within the parameters of these existing approved referendum language. So we're we're able to actually execute these. So it's good. Um several of these projects take advantage of state school construction grants um on an individual project basis. So we've included those in the financials. And at the end of the four years, the building has a new feel and doesn't require heavy capital investment for seven to ten years. So think from a taxpayer perspective, uh somebody here's we're putting twenty million dollars into a school. They don't expect two years later, we're putting another five. Which we'd have to do with the roof. Uh so this is giving us a building now where we won't have that intensive capital demand. Uh for at least at least seven years. So in your packet, you have. Kind of a quick and dirty spreadsheet that has a a budget analysis on it. Uh my brain is twenty five percent finance, so I always start with the numbers. Uh and just wanted to kinda get a handle, cause there's been a lot of moving pieces with the referendum, uh especially within the separate projects. So. Referendum package is eighty nine million dollars. Uh and it included uh several projects, but what was allocated to Polson. Was about twenty one point five million. Now, three point four eight five of that was moved over to Neck River. Uh to handle possible cost increases in that project, but it's looking right now. That 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 money could possibly come back to the Polson project. Uh but for the sake of this, I've taken this money off. Uh the revised referendum budget, we're calling it, is about eighteen million dollars. So as part of this four year plan, uh there was a separate project that was in our capital plan to put in a full building generator at Polson. Uh in in in. One step in towards making it an emergency shelter. And also covering the cost of a lot of the electrical infrastructure that's necessary um to put in the additional cooling. So we pushed that money into this overall budgets, three point one million dollars, one point five of that is grants. That makes a gross budget of twenty one point two. Now, as I mentioned earlier, we've encumbered one point two million dollars in non-construction costs thus far. Leaving us with a budget of just under twenty million dollars remaining. Uh if we add in from the original project budget, about one point six million dollars of non-construction costs. That gives us one point or that gives us eighteen point three million dollars, including escalation, contingency and the full amount of the generator SIP funds. Uh as uh our construction budget. Now, if we're fortunate enough to have the three point four eight five move back from Neck River. That gives us an overall potential construction budget of twenty one seven eight six, so twenty one million seven hundred and six thousand bucks. So that's where we started with building this project list is that as an available budget. So absolutely good. I need to direct anyone.
So none of this went out to bid, correct? So when Collier designed it, not nothing went out to bid, correct?
There were individual solicitations for the design team and for the construction manager to manage the process, but none of the none of this actual work has gone out.
And that was based on the thirty million dollar. Correct?
The thirty million dollars were the were the estimates that were coming in in the pre-construction phase. Yep. So nothing, nothing went out to bid, it's. We're nowhere near the.
So how does Gil Bayne get the job?
So they were hired as, we we actually, she mentioned that, so we don't have a contract with Gil Bayne right now.
Right.
Um Gil Bayne came on board. They were they were selected as the construction manager. Uh for the the gross project, so to speak.
By who? By Collier?
No, that would have been awarded by the. Yeah.
Oh.
Building committee for the project.
And I will go to the board of selectmen. So I that was before my time here, but they were.
It just seems honestly. I don't know. I mean, I do this for a living, but it just seems like Gil Bayne got the. The neck job, the Neck River school job, and then Gil Bayne gets this without. Any scope.
Same process was used for this project as the new school.
But there's no scope.
No, but the same the the same process to select Gil Bayne was used for this as it was for the new school. So they went through a competitive process.
But if we're changing the scope. From thirty million to twenty one million, that's a nine million dollar differential.
So that.
Things would be so different.
So that's that's not um eh that that's a misunderstanding. So the budget. What for the project was twenty three million. Money was moved from this project to. Um Neck River project. Which left us with twenty one million to do the cooling and the um auditorium.
Yep.
The but the the cost came in. At around thirty million dollars is what they told us for basically there's been explained the the cooling portion of it. So we were gonna have the. You know, I had shared with the the um building committee that my. Um kind of take out of this, you know, from my perspective was we had to do the auditorium. So I think that that was along with the the total budget, along with everything else. Um caused a lot of relooking at this. We're fortunate in that meantime and that that time to hire. I know that. It wasn't, you know, as Ben said, it probably was not going to happen. Um you know, we presented to the school, but when we presented to the board of selectmen. The response was, you know, thank you, Ben, for kinda taking a new look at this, cause he he had a new look. Peter was, you know, working on. Um his portions of the job. And so I think that that's what led us to today. Um and we'll accomplish.
Yeah, I think I can say the question.
You think you.
When you're you're talking about from a procurement angle, you're saying Gil Bayne was brought on board.
Based on a thirty million dollar budget.
No, they're actually, no, they they what was advertised in the R P was uh actually a fifteen million dollar. Budget at the time.
For that specific HVAC.
For for the for, it was listed as, again, this is before my time, but it was HVAC improvements, auditorium improvements. With a potential G M P. Gross maximum price of a little under fifteen million. So now what we're talking about is still HVAC improvements. Um more auditor, you know, auditorium improvements and a potential G M P of closer to a one, you know, ten or eleven.
But the HVAC improvements are five billion dollars.
No.
Yeah, but we're.
Now.
Were the 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 scope for year one that we routed through, potentially routed through the construction manager, eleven million. And those are the projects I'll get into in a second.
But five million is based on HVAC.
Yeah, there's.
That's a huge differential.
It's a it's a different project.
I know, that's my point, is that, so I I kind of think that you have to then. Go re-go out to bid. We already spent one point two million dollars. What's the breakdown of that? That's a lot of money.
Yeah, that's that's encumbered right now, so that's not all.
I know. I love a breakdown of what we spent one point two million dollars on.
They'll provide that to me, but as Ben said, it's encumbered, not not spent. It was in the process of. Being designed. We did a lot of design work on it. Uh and that's what led us to the to the cost.
Right. Just just to expand, the the fifteen million dollars that was originally in the R P cell station was HVAC, electrical. Auditorium.
Yep.
So. If we go through the list of these projects, which was was gonna be my next step here. We're looking at HVAC. A mil- an extra million in the gym. But three million of electrical, two point seven million dollars in auditorium. So it's fifteen versus eleven. That that's what, but it's it's still the same categories of work.
Right.
Could you go out to R P again? Sure. Uh that 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 wouldn't be, I don't know if you'll get a different result. Because again, they were they were proposing on. A C M markup and pre-construction rates with a potential G M P of fifteen. I mean, again, that's a decision for the building committee. Doesn't matter to me personally. If we call it R P again or not, um I just wanna work with you guys through the project.
What year was that done? That. So I guess how many years back is this?
Within the within the last year, yeah. The overruns came. Came out about what, mid-June?
Yeah.
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 For us, yeah.
I mean, you 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 I I don't mean to be difficult at all, but you see my point when it comes to, I mean, you start up here. And then we're here. And then we're going from eleven million dollars on a prospective HVAC. I know all about these V R V R Fs and all that fun stuff. And then you go to a five million dollar. That it just. And it's great that we can use the same mechanical system, right, is what we're using. But we're just changing units out, correct?
So yeah, I think it'd be helpful if I walked through the projects and then you could.
Yeah.
I just, cause I don't wanna.
No, heading out.
And then go back and like talk about.
Yeah.
So this is, so year one has five projects that are would be rolled into one execution phase with the existing design team. So project number one is installing the V R F duct split systems in the areas of buildings that are not currently cooled. So we're doing this, we estimated forty five spaces at thirty thousand a space. Uh that number actually may go down a little bit. We're walking through, we we finally started reinvigorating our our design. Um to to move over to this type of system. Uh we actually might be closer about thirty spaces. So again, these are high level budget numbers. That I started putting together after four weeks of experience in the district and we've been refining them uh almost daily. But uh good, good conservative number that's based on projects that I've been involved in in the past few years. Uh project number two is to replace the HVAC in spaces currently cooled. So again, these are in kind replacements. For the systems that are in the portions of the building that are already cooled. Uh we have twelve penthouses up there, about eighty two thousand total C F M. Uh we carry two point nine million dollars. Uh that find that Peter was talking about a few minutes ago uh was when. The designers were first brought on board, they were looking at again like a clean slate. What would you do if you had this box and you were gonna design a new HVAC system for it? They didn't spend a lot of time documenting the existing conditions in the building. Uh I got up on the roof last week and just started poking around in a bunch of places and found that. That's where we found that the type of system up there was actually that existed was not what we were thinking it originally was. Uh and it actually was a a a system that is perfectly functioning. Uh it actually would be less expensive, potentially than that three million dollars, but for for the sake of of putting budget numbers together. Uh that's a a good place to be right now. Second is the main gym renovation. So this is adding a rooftop unit for cooling and heating in there. Uh it's actually not gonna be a rooftop, it's gonna be sitting on a roof next to the gym. So rooftop, but not the gym's rooftop. Uh refurbishing the flooring, putting new bleachers in, uh lighting and miscellaneous work that really have a a a showpiece for the community there. Uh very important, the electrical upgrades in the generator. Again, this money is gonna be covered by the SIP funds that were pulled into this project. Uh what we're trying to do is maximize that grant. So as much of that work uh to the main electrical infrastructure in that building. We wanna push into that into grant eligible work. Uh so we're working with the town operations department. Uh with that, who spearheaded the grant for emergency shelter per- purposes.
Question, oh, we definitely have that grant, but the town definitely has that.
There's one million of one point five that I know about. That's that's in hand right now.
I think it's pending, but maybe we should have finished up the presentation and then we'll go into detailed questions.
Uh so again, that's that's all the main in electrical infrastructure. So that is the building service. Uh all the electrical distribution that would go out to new air conditioning units uh would be handled in uh line one. Uh the nice thing about replacing any kind for the spaces that are currently cooled, very limited elec- very limited electrical work needed there. And last, not least, is the auditorium renovation. So uh during the value engineering process, that project was kind of butchered all the way down. I think we were just se- new seating at one point. Uh this is a full renovation of the space where it's flooring, it's abating the asbestos flooring in there. Seating, lighting, both house introduction, uh addition of air conditioning to the system there, uh to the HVAC system there, refurbishing the stage. And all uh audio visual. So really making that the the showpiece auditorium for the community. So that's year one, which as of now is proposed to be uh executed with the with the existing project team. Then. When we call that year one, that's actually not one summer's worth of work. A lot of this work we could actually do. While the school is occupied with very limited disruption. Uh for example, and and we we're starting the process of playing around with different ways to package this and schedule this. Uh the V R F project did it by last district. We did the entire project on second shift. Uh so literally no interruption to the schools at all. Uh they would come in one day, oh, I gotta, I'm gonna share my room. Uh so that that there are many different ways we could slice this. Uh we would, and by construction year one. Uh the big push where obviously we have to do a lot of the abatement work and any of the more invasive work over the summer, it would be summer of twenty six. Though we would probably do, not probably, we would have to do an early procurement package to secure long lead time items like a generator, for example. Uh depending on the style of generator, it's a minimum of a year out. Uh switch gear is still hard to get uh and and that could be a year to a year and a half. Uh but the first year of big construction push would be twenty six. Um Dr. Cook has been promised Polson will remain untouched this summer. Uh it it will be off, because with this plan, it would be offline for the next several summers. Uh but Polson is aren't the only uh school in the district next summer where there's no major activity happening. So uh we'd like to keep one place so we can have summer school and not be disrupted. Uh when we get into years two through four, again, these are, these these look and feel more like kind of regular everyday capital projects you do in a school district. So. Two, uh. Huge customer impact, sounds very simple. It's a large project and that's abating all the existing asbestos tile flooring in the building and replacing it with either V C T. Or carpet tile, depending on the space, uh eligible for school construction grant reimbursement. I carry twenty five percent of our current reimbursement rate for this type of work is twenty nine point two nine. Uh the the state always seems to find something that's ineligible, so I carry twenty five to be on the safe side for that. Uh so uh our out-of-pocket cost, our local shares, I call it, will be a little over a million dollars. That same year is the year we would do the roof. Uh again, state school construction grant project. Uh roofing prices have been all over the map lately. Uh right now, they're a little more favorable than they were last year, especially the year before. Uh carry forty dollars a square foot for that. And uh we're looking at about five point nine million dollars with a local share of four point four. That product's currently in the SIP for fiscal year thirty three. That roof is never going to last to fiscal year thirty three. I was up there last week. Uh it's in the SIP right now for five point one. Obviously, this goes through uh that that moves out of the SIP. Uh moving to year three, now we start to get into some more kind of pretty work, as we call it. Uh this is ceilings and lighting in common areas, a huge customer impact. Uh done this at 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 several schools over the years. Uh people walk in, they think they're in a new school. Uh this is either uh this is doing all the pads, the crucial ceiling pad in the building. Uh areas that don't have grids, would get new ceiling grids or if they have dated ones, uh also putting in the uh latest and greatest of of L E D lighting. Uh moving into or also in year three, another big project would be window replacement in the building. Uh that is now eligible through the state school construction grant process, both labor and materials. Uh they used to pay for materials, but not labor, which is kinda weird. Uh used a pearl in your foot price uh for a project done over the past few years, to get a number for that. I said this when we talked to the uh board of selectmen. If any number is too high in this budget, it's that number. Uh that building, I was basing it on square footage, but it has so much interior space, I was able to pull some out there. And add that to uh that HVAC line. So that that has been a change since this went to the board of selectmen. Is we uh reconfigured those two lines just to be more accurate. Uh year four, uh these are, these are high impact, but relatively simple projects. One are classroom refreshes. So. Uh this is something I put into place about seven years ago where I noticed that. You went into a lot of schools, even ones that had a decent amount of capital investment over the years. Uh but you'd go into a classroom, the classroom looked like nineteen fifty five still, and that's where the kids are spending their whole day. Uh and it hadn't been painted in twenty five years, it still had the old flooring. Uh it it would have an exposed ceiling grid or a very early generation of an acoustical grid. Uh so what we do in these scenarios where uh we'd go in there, we'd give the thing a a full paint job. We do put blinds in there, uh any of the the rooms that have millwork, so I brown, we just did a huge project, putting in new millwork in all the classrooms. Kind of a a bucket friendly way of doing that is you replace the cabinet doors. Uh and then you paint the cabinets, be surprised how nice that looks when it's done. Uh put L E D lighting in there. Flooring would be handled through the uh flooring project. And we're budgeting fifty spaces at about thirteen K a room. Uh that could go up or down again, that's four years out. And last is a simple finish off painting, full building exterior, classrooms will have already been done by that point, or full building interior. Classroom's already done by that point and we're carrying out about two dollars a square foot for that. So when you add all that up. Uh the total for the four years. Is twenty three point five gross with twenty million local share. So with a potential construction budget of twenty one point seven, that would actually put us on a gross basis at this point. A shortfall of one point seven. But if we were successful in securing the grants and all of these are non-priorityless grants, there really is no reason you wouldn't get these grants to the state. Uh we would actually have a surplus of a million. So right now, the focus is year one. The way to look at that swing between the one uh million surplus and the one point seven shortfalls is to say. This kinda passes the smell test as a good way forward. We could always alter years two through four as we go. Uh but right now, the priority is, uh like I said, leveraging that project team and uh getting year one. Up and running.
So if I could summarize, we're looking at a reduction of cost, bringing it under budget. Much better HVAC coverage from Polson. Better customer experience for the town and the audience and for the classroom refresh. Better customer experience for the town and the audience, and for the classroom refresh, we'll try to minimize disruption to students and staff. We'll try to maximize the use of grants.
And then also adding in the, the roof and another project to the gym, which was not planned in the front, and so.
So your only space in here, uh, that wouldn't be cooled is your auxiliary gym. That's one that, that was not added back in the locker.
So, I have, I have a question, statement, problem. So, the original referendum was that Paulson was gonna get HVAC throughout the entire building.
No, some improvements and upgrades to Paulson's school.
Okay, so, I, it's been a wo- a minute. That thing was like a hundred million pages long. Um, and I apologize for not being.
No, that, that's a great question, that's the first thing we looked at.
But yeah, because, um, like, my understanding was, and I think it was because of the limitations of money. That we were focusing on the HVAC and the auditorium. And then there was the problems with abatement, and there was problems with the duct work, and there was problems, all sorts of problems. And then, um, the town was getting a grant to help cover the electrical. Because they wanna use it as a shelter as well as the, um, the generator, correct? So, and I, I don't, I am not aware of where they are with that movement, if we have secured. The grant, if it's in the works or how that's gonna go, but. Based on our past experience with trying to get grants for like HVAC from the state. It's been, we could get it, we're not getting it, we might get it, we still might get it, but a lot less, not as much as we thought, now really a lot less than we thought. And it's, it's kind of like a moving target because it's not locked in. So, my, one of my concerns is counting on the grant money if we're not certain how much we'll get, when we'll get it, if it's. If they're gonna change the parameters of the grant, or if for some reason we're not gonna meet the parameters that we thought we were. So that's, a- and I'm not sure, I know it's part of it is addressed in here because I think the one line you had. You said you just were carrying the full cost now on that, at the first line. About adding cool into all the classrooms that are currently cooled, so I see that, so there's a possibility then, that number could be less.
It could, but I, I wouldn't, like you said, so right now, there are no future rounds of HVAC grants being announced. They, they just said they're paused, so I wouldn't budget for one.
So that was one that we thought we could get a grant, and then now we're not, so we're gonna carry that.
Yeah, I don't know what was thought before, but yeah.
Well, who knows what they're throwing up.
Yeah, I wasn't, uh, I, I certainly wouldn't carry one for that, the, uh, the, on the town side for the generator. Uh, one million of that one point five, uh, to best of my knowledge is secured, like it's approved, like we're ready to move with it. Uh, the other five was from, uh. Remember what happened, what that was through, but that, I think that's the one that isn't fully secured.
Okay.
So, that would be important to secure that.
But the referendum does say it's for total improvements, okay, and then, um. So, question I have then is the roof replacement. Like, we have it, we had it pushed out in CIP to thirty-three, and you went up there and said, there's no way it's gonna last that long. And I'm just wondering, like, when was the last time anyone went up on the roof to see this, if we had it in our CIP out to thirty-three? Like, I'm just wondering, and it's not directed at anyone here, it's just like.
No, I think, I, I, I think that's a, another good question, um, we are looking at all our roofs, I think Peter and Ben are, um. You know, have a lot of experience in this, you know, they've both been with us for a short amount of time, they've been up on Daniel Hand roof a lot of times as well. You know, it's not our discussion, uh, today, but that's a project that they are concerned where that, that's placed in the CIP, so we're looking at that. Um, as we go forward as well, but, um, yeah, they clearly indicated to us that that's a concern. Um, you know, I will, I will say, we're gonna potentially have to look at CIP very soon, because we've been asked by the town just today. To have another look at our, our CIP because the number's too high, so, um, you know, we're, we're, we're sitting here with an opportunity. To remove the Paulson roof off the CIP, which we have no chance of moving it up. Um, you know, so that, th- this is a, a great opportunity for us.
So, no, go ahead, okay, so I guess my other question would be. When we arrived at that thirty million dollar figure, which we're not at anymore. Then how, how did no one go on the roof like you did, right? And realize, I'm not blaming anyone at all, I just wanna be clear. How did no one realize that the existing HVAC system that was in place? Which brings the fresh air in, et cetera, et cetera, was usable? And it did not have to be a complete hall.
I had no idea.
Before you move on, it's not, it's not a, a, a thank you, I think we have to understand what the project was.
I'm not.
So the project, the, the existing cooling to the building, what's on the roof right now, cools about forty percent of the building. We are adding the other sixty percent on top. Let me finish though, there was nothing there right now. So, in order for us to have that cooling, cool the rest of the building, Ben said he had to do major surgery and bring in duct work. That's why it was thirty million, we are not doing that going forward, we would do the split units, which would just be not major surgery. It's, it's not, we didn't know the price.
No, but you know, do that.
We al- we always knew we could do that, the, the preference was at the time to do full new HVAC. But until we got a price of thirty million dollars, we didn't know.
I'm, I'm speculating completely, but I think the, the reason why, cause I, when I talked to the, the mechanical engineer last week, once we. Finally got this back into, let's start talking about design again, uh, you know, I brought up to what I saw up there, and I'm like. Like, and, and they were like, yeah, we didn't really fully realize that either, cause their charge was add air conditioning to these places that don't have it. And then make it all a uniform system that works together. So what they were designing for the wi- the new wings, the latest and greatest with DOAS units and all that kinda stuff. They were overlaying that over the entire building.
Right.
So they were like, again, their, their charge, I don't know where, how they got their charge, but it's, it's a reasonable charge to say. We want a brand-new HVAC system in this building, so they're like, okay, scrap that, we're putting the latest and greatest in. Um, and, and we're gonna have uniformity and one building control system and all that kinda stuff, so once you start splitting it apart, it becomes a whole different thing. They never even, they never really cared about what was there existing.
And how do you do, how do you do the roof? How do you put rooftop units on when the roof is not, right?
So, that was a, that was, that was a, no, no, but no, I'm, I'm, I'm actually glad you said, I'm glad you said that, so one. So, one of the things that, before I started here, I was looking at the plans on this job. And I remember going, how old is the roof, and it was like, I think it was twenty-one years old or something like that, and I forgot what the number was. But like, thirty-five percent of the roof was actually gonna get removed. To put in all these new rooftop units and new roof right around the new units put in, and I'm like. But you're gonna leave the other sixty-five percent, so, but again, when the charge was. To put in new HVAC, period, it's almost like you don't see the forest through the trees at that point, you know, so that, it's funny you said that, cause that was like.
So I have a couple of questions a- and a statement, so I think. One of the issues that I have, I think, is that a lot of this stuff is happening. It's outside of us because it's the building committee, and I feel like. They probably need to come and report to us, now I know that you are, you sit in on it, and so does Seth. Um, but I feel like they are our committee, essentially. And like all of our committees, we have a report in our meetings. So, I'm not saying they need to come to every meeting, but I think that maybe they need to start coming to some to give us a more updated report. Of exactly what's going on, cause I feel like we're sort of getting hit with this, like, what is going on? And it's like news to us, and, and this is sort of like overlapping facilities and CIP and the referendum. And it's like, that's a lot, and you know, some of us are on CIP, and some of us are on facilities, and then there's the new building committee, which is sort of outside of that. And, and the rest of it gets reported to us every meeting, right, facilities reports, pretty much CIP with finance. And so I feel like perhaps it would behoove us to have them report directly to us once a month. Couple times a semester, I don't know.
They're, they're, they're not our committee, they are the.
They're not.
Board of Selectmen's committee, we are fortunate to have three board members on it, but we, they're not our committee.
Can a selectman come? Cause we used to have a liaison from the Board of Selectmen, and they would like update us on all the things that they're doing. And that sort of got dropped, and I feel like maybe that's a missing component as well, like how Seth wanted.
Yeah, thank you, um, the s- new school building committee is a town committee organized and chartered by the Board of Select. The Paulson project technically was kept within the Board of Ed. And is a project of the Facilities Committee of the, of the Board of Ed. But it's, it's kind of jointly overseen because of the shared budgetary impact. So, there, it's kind of like the new school building committee. I- is.
I don't think Paulson's ours then, if, if the referen- I mean, this is, if the building committee went with the referendum, that's all Paulson too then.
Yeah, it's all part of that.
It's, 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 the school building committee for this project is chaired by Gene Fitzjoe.
Okay.
It is Board of Selectmen, maybe, we have three Board of Ed members on it.
And that's the, that's the HVAC, there's two different committees, the, there's the new school building committee. That is, um, chaired by Graham Purdis, and that is to build, that was mostly to build. Um, and chartered to build McRiver School. There is another committee that's a town committee called the, um, ad hoc. Town, no, 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 I'm sorry, it's called the, um, Schools HVAC Committee.
Okay.
All right, and that has joint oversight over Paulson HVAC and Daniel Hand HVAC. So, I think part of the problem here is there's a lot of, um, chefs. You know, um, in the kitchen, and it's hard to make a stew when you have too many chefs in the kitchen. So, I, you know, I don't disagree that there may need to be a little bit more coordination. At some points, um, and also better delineation, which I have raised. Um, better delineation as between the different charges of the, those various committees. And, um, I apologize, it was the Brown School, um, project that we retained. In, on our, um, Board of Ed Facilities Committee.
Thank you, Seth.
Sure.
Steve, I've kept, Steve, that's. Well, this has been an education.
Yeah.
Um, so there's the good news and the bad news, the good news is, we're gonna get pretty much everything we wanted within the budget. That we can afford, that's the good news, the bad news is how the heck? Did the process go wrong? That it went immediately to a design phase of thirty million dollars to build the Cadillac without. The value engineering and the. Preliminary work to know if that was what really is called for, you know?
Well, Steve.
I mean, there needs, there needs to be some analysis along the line in terms of, how do we have a process? That gives us what we want within budget before we go to referendums to the public, in my view.
Steve, can I, can I answer that? Um, I think there's a basic misunderstanding, um, as to where we are in the process. Um, the, um, the Paulson stuff is still in. Like, advanced early design phase, we, all this stuff was learned, you would expect to learn this stuff. During design phase, and I think it's a little bit unfortunate that, you know, we're mischaracterizing this as an overrun. An overrun only occurs mid-project during the construction phase when money is being overspent. We're not anywhere near there, we haven't started the construction phase yet. The best way to characterize what we're dealing with here is a projected cost increase. Above what we thought it was gonna cost at, through the design process. Okay, so, we're catching it on time, it sounds bad, especially if you call it an overrun. But we're catching it on when you would hope to catch it, necessity is the mother of invention, and I credit Peter and, and Ben. For looking at this mess, because we had a couple tense meetings, public meetings, where we discussed. How much more it was gonna cost than what we anticipated. Some of it's because of inflation, supply chain issues, and some of it is because the design. Team was told, like Ben said, they were told, here's the problem, here's how you have to sign it, what's the price gonna be? When we got the price back, we were like, uh, holy what? Um, and there were, you know, there were a couple tense meetings, and again, necessity became the mother of invention. Where people were recharged to go back and look at it again. And through that process and Ben coming on board, and Ben and Peter taking a fresh look at it, we can't, they came up with this amazing. Um, not only responsible but excellent response, that to totally redesign the project. In advance of us spending anything other than, you know, some of that money for design, right? And so, that, that's, that's where we are now, so it's not unfortunate, it's actually in my mind, it's fortunate.
Okay, thank, thank you, Seth, one more quick.
A quick question, so, um, so Gilbane is our construction manager, but we don't have a contract with them, is it?
So, Gil, so Gilbane's contract was in, I guess what you would call the final stages of negotiation back in, uh, July. But that was based on pre-construction services with a potential GMP at fifteen million. When we realized right, when, when that contract was being negotiated was right around the time these cost estimates started coming in. That were close to thirty million dollars, and that's when we said, hey, let's, let's stop. We don't wanna sign a contract when we know we can't afford what the e- existing scope now is.
Right, I look, I, I agree, I would like to say thank you to both of you for doing that, because I think it had worked for the two of you. Taking it upon yourself to do a deeper dive into what was actually happening. I think we would have looked at a thirty million dollar price tag.
Yeah.
And what concerns me is, and I'm not negative on Gilbane, but what concerns me about that is that if they're. The construction manager on this, Ann Collier behind them, then that legwork should have been done prior.
So to Gilbane's credit, they immediately started working on validating all the estimates that were in place when they onboarded. And they're actually the ones that raised the red flag and said, hang on a second, this is not doable for what you have, and so, yeah.
God for confidence, so it's been a really good presentation, and we should celebrate the good news, there's some really valid procedural. Really valid procedural questions that, that have been addressed, and you should do a better job of reporting, there should be people around. I, I completely agree with that, they say all projects go through six phases, enthusiasm, disillusionment, panic, search for the guilty. Uh, punishment of the innocent.
Where are we in that?
But, um, but we celebrate the good news that, that we're under budget with, with a better customer experience for the town.
But this was awesome.
So, thank you.
So helpful.
Great solutions.
Presented in a way that was digestible, I, I, I appreciate that, I think both, you have it right.
All right, um, I can walk back, where are we now? I'm complete, my report is complete, thank you.
Good, good report.
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, good job.
It's there, or no further, do, does, do any board members have any initial comments on what we've covered?
Yeah, I do, I just, I would like the breakdown at the one point two million.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and then is there any audience response to information presented? Heather would like. All right, so, at this stage, I would, if there's general consent. I would like to, um, call for a motion to move an agenda item around specifically, um. Uh, I'd like to switch places, um, if we take a look at action item number sixteen, which is to go into. Um, discuss, take action on the Madison Education Association Collective bargaining agreement. Um, in effect from July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. I would like to see if I can get a motion, um, to move that agenda item to number seven before the consent agenda. And then to renumber all the following items, so this way we can, um, wrap up Heather's night.
Heather can go on, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
So, so we, good, so we have a.
A motion to move it.
A motion to move it, all right.
Yes.
Um, is there any, right, second? Right. Second. Great. Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? To avoid renumbering the rest, you could call it whatever number it be. Okay, thank you. Okay. Go through the rest of the night. Right. Thank you.
No, let's move on to action item three.
All right. Okay, and so all in favor of of moving that agenda item and labeling it to six B, I suppose. All in favor?
Hi.
Nate, see none, motion carries eight, nothing. At this stage, we need to propose the actual motion. So I have a motion to discuss and take action on the Madison Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. This discussion is proposed for executive session.
So moved.
So moved. Oh, I should also.
Invite.
Yeah, we need to invite Super competitive schools, Dr. Cook and Director of Human Resources, Heather Dobson to executive session. So.
So moved.
So moved Diane. Second, thank you, Steve.
We are on your time.
Okay.
Eight forty one.
Eight forty one. Thank you, Zoe. All right. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Posed, none. See, none, motion carries eight, nothing. All right, so we will now enter executive session.
Gail, there's Jeff and he's gonna have a long drink.
Hey, you're back.
And we're back. All right. Pardon?
Yeah, you're good.
Thank you. I'd like to have someone entertain a motion to return to regular session at eight fifty five. Oh, my goodness. I'll go.
We're all good.
Kathy and.
Excellent.
I'll go Kathy and with Mary Ann. All right. We'll forego discussion on favor.
Hi.
Okay, pose Nate, motion carries eight, nothing. Thank you. We are in regular session. We need a motion to approve the Madison Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement for the period of July first, twenty twenty five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty nine. May have a motion. So moved. Thank you, Steve.
Second.
And thank you, Kathy. Any discussion? At this point, I'd like to thank all parties concerned, Dr. Cook, Heather Dobson, and our fabulous teachers, along with Gail. All in favor?
Hi.
Posed, none, motion carries eight, nothing. All right. Now we resume our regular business of committee of the consent agenda. So action item number seven is our consent agenda, which is in your packet. Consists of line item transfers, budget expenditures as of October the first, twenty twenty four, and September twenty twenty four personnel report. I hope everybody's had the opportunity to look at it. And if so, need a motion to approve this consent agenda.
So moved.
Emily, thank you. Is there any discussion or any questions about any items in the consent agenda? All right, so it's a good report. Carry then. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Posed, none, motion carries eight, nothing. And wouldn't you know, we had a very impactful day of committee meetings, which we need reports. And starting with Curriculum Institute Development chaired by Steve Penn.
Yes, we met this evening. I'll try and keep my report short and to the point. There were two items on the agenda. The meeting was attended by Kathy Miller, Mary Ann Connolly, myself, and Seth on Zoom. First item was data collection and visualization. There was a presentation around the infinite campus that the district is using and has been using for three years, and it has been evolving. I would encourage people to look in their packet and look at the information that was presented. It's very comprehensive. And numerous data points across the district, bulk of it in the K through three, but still many, many, maybe fifty, sixty, seventy data points that are available and being used by our teachers, to some extent by students, and certainly by administrators. To cut to the chase on this issue, this agenda item. You know, these things are presented as comprehensive data and information that comes back from assessment. But, you know, part of the comments I made in the meeting, and, you know, I've had the luxury of being able to sit down with Gail and see in great detail how this utilized. And the point is this, this is incredibly important pillar to the overall umbrella or overall structure of how we do business in Madison and how we empower teachers to be able to have information at their fingertips that they can then rapidly adjust so that it picks up on students that are struggling and it identifies kids that are excelling and allows adjustments all the way along the line. adjustments all the way along the line on the curriculum that our, our teachers own. So I can't underscore enough how advanced this is and how important it is and how accessible it is and what an integral part it is to how, we do learning and instruction in town, and I think is no small part in the success we're seeing in terms of student learning. The other item on the agenda was presented by the high school and the team on the NIAS site visit, which is coming up in November from seventeenth, the seventeenth to the twentieth. Again, comprehensive, and I'm not going to go through all of the details. I will cut to the chase. It is very clear in the presentation that this is a process that TJ and his team and the teachers have fully embraced and gone into in great detail. And so it's a ton of work. You know, clearly they have the attitude that this is an opportunity for them to improve and continue to improve and learn, and they own it. Um, and, you know, being a lifelong educator, I can tell you, the S visits for the most part are not embraced as a wonderful experience. For most, mostly it's a burden. The fact, and TJ pointed this out, uh, that they engage in this very time-consuming and intensive experience at the same time uh, that they were identified as a blue ribbon school is really uh, pretty extraordinary because usually when schools get involved in the NIAS process, other things end up on the back burner. I won't go into all the details of what it covers. I mean, they're, they went through uh, five major phases of this process, and within your packet, you will see uh, the PowerPoint that will be presented to the visiting team, um, when they come. But, you know, all of the members of the committee, I think, I think it's safe to say left this presentation with a great deal of confidence that this visit is going to go very well. And, uh, the, the team is fully prepared for it, so. Is there any questions? I'm certainly happy to answer them, otherwise.
We've got a question about the members of the team. Uh, we are going, we have a Zoom NIAS meeting. I just.
Yeah.
What is that?
Sure. So they, um, they always offer the opportunity for the board of that to meet with the visiting team before they even start to visit. So they're getting to town that day. It used to be in the afternoon, uh, but I think with Zoom becoming so popular, they now do it. Um, maybe they found better attendance on a Sunday from, uh, um, the board administration. So, um, it's really just an opportunity for the visiting committee to ask some questions of the board here for the board. Um, usually the, the chair, uh, would, would just kind of give a statement welcoming to town and, uh, you know, giving them some highlights, you know, like, so we could kind of just welcome it. It'd be great if as many people can attend as possible. I know seven o'clock on a Sunday is that great? But, uh, uh, yeah, it's your chance to. Before they do any work, which I think is, is.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Thank you. Yeah. We will send out a reminder.
I want yours up at seven. Thank you.
And when is the next step with the blueberry? Is there a ceremony in Washington? So there is a ceremony in Washington. What we would like to do is, um, hopefully before a regular board meeting or at some point have a, um, have our, uh, local politicians come forward, anybody else, you know, maybe a reception, have a recommend, uh, you know, recognition for the, for the high school, and then there'll be a band at the high school as well. So we're playing two of those. Yeah. Oh, it's Washington. So unfortunately, they have only invited three people, so it was fair, it's small. We're setting in our best.
We'll see him on Zoom.
All right, well, with that, uh, Emily, do you have anything for facilities?
I do. We had a special facilities meeting today. We had a tour at Brown School, um, to sort of see the updates since last spring when we visited. I think I can say we were all really impressed. It looks beautiful. Even from the spring, um, we've, you know, you've heard of things before about all the flooring, the railings, the woodwork either is new or refinished. In lighting, um, the main hall, you know, that long hall with the high ceilings just feels totally different. There's bright colors. There's things on the walls. The library is closed off with some really cute windows. There's seating areas sort of sprinkled out throughout the building. All the doors, new mill work. There's still some work that there, or this really great new area like by the gym entrance with some cute seating areas on either side. Just, it's really remarkable. Um, and you have to see it. You do have to see it because I'm not there. So hopefully we'll have, um, some sort of opportunity for the public to come and see it because it does really feel like a different school and very inviting, especially for younger learners. Um, there is some more work to be done in furniture in the library. Work to the pre-K area, parking, uh, playgrounds for the younger students, but it was, it's really great. And people were saying the value of what we got from this work is pretty amazing. So it was really fun and, um, we're gonna be happier.
It feels like a, a new school. It's been like a completely different school, and it's so bright.
Yes.
And light and airy and it's gonna, when it's all done, it's gonna be great. And they also showed us signs.
Oh, yeah.
They ordered it, that they're gonna put off, and it just, it, it's gonna look so good. And I, I did say to Dr. Cook, it would be great if we could get like pictures of that or something or some sort of like brief presentations. So that way it's on video and the public can view it via YouTube and they can kind of see, you know, what's going on, like what the signs are gonna look like and just some of the changes. And I know you plan to have them invited to tour this area at some point, but.
Wouldn't like the source do something like that too?
So we have, um, local, um, coverage is very sparse. Uh, so we had, um, our teacher of the year. We tried to have the source cover that or, um, uh, the hats event. We had, you know, student where, uh, we tried to have. Yeah, it's really been tough for us. We, um, so I should say, we, so gives them a, a press release that basically is an article that they could just take their name off it and put their name on it and it doesn't get picked up. So, um, Ben Rayner, who was there for a while, um, is no longer there. So, um, yes, but that would be, you, you're right. That would typically, you know, be Brown School gets a facelift. It's not, yeah.
Even in the shoreline times, there'd be one of those.
We will, uh, we'll try and get parents in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. If there's photos on the website, Facebook, they're updated. Ray, there's plenty of traffic there.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, I mean, like we saw pictures today of the news, the signs that are ordered. So like the signs are not there yet, you know.
So it wouldn't go out until we have.
Right.
But sadly, and I mean, just for everybody else, you know, like everybody, I think they put it in the newspaper. Hello.
We'll have to spread the word.
Yeah, we'll have to be as well.
And it's important.
All right. Thank you, Emily. Uh, thank you, everyone. Um, next up is the finance committee. We met on, uh, guess way back when, September seventeenth. We made the meeting at five thirty. Emily and I were defendants, as was Seth, that's official. Uh, Dr. Cook and Stacy Nowitz, finance director, were also there. We, um, we had two main agenda items. The first was a draft calendar for the budget process. Uh, we are hoping, I know the central administration right now is, is under discussion. We are hoping to adopt and approve a, a budget calendar and guidelines at our next finance meeting, which is October twenty-second. Present that for the full board. Um, we have a firm deadline of November fifteenth to, uh, submit proposed budgets into the county system, and, uh, we'd like to have action by the board on the administration recommended budget by January twenty-first. The second item on the agenda was to discuss end of year balances, which at the time I believe were about a hundred and forty thousand as of September seventeenth. That might. Dr. Cook informed us that the district is no longer eligible for about a hundred thousand dollars in Title I funds. If you make a mistake, you know, correct me on the way. And then we discussed, um, the, uh, increased electricity costs for the current operating here. Put an eye towards, uh, possible reductions next year, uh, with the new rooftop units at hand. When the, uh, Dec River School goes geothermal, uh, and when you close three buildings. There were no public comments that we charged at five fifty-five. All right, um, thank you. Next up would be the Personnel Committee. Maureen is not here, so I'll turn it over to Kathy.
We have it then. They'll report.
There we go. Very successful, including to your hard work, yes. Yeah, I know.
Galen, I'm sorry. Can we just, just real quick go back? I know Maureen's not, not here, but we really do, uh, need to thank the Personnel Committee, um, and Heather and Craig and the union, um, for the great job in negotiating that contract. So good job, everybody.
Thank you for the kick save, son. All right, next up, um, would be a report from the Policy Committee.
Uh, we met on September seventeenth, and, um, everything we discussed is actually in your packet this evening. We have, um, a bunch of policies for rescission. We discussed sixty eighty point twenty-one bilingual instruction, sixty eighty point twenty-one point one English learner students, sixty eighty point twenty-four point two magnet schools, sixty eighty point twenty-five early childhood education, sixty eighty point twenty-five point two school readiness, sixty one ten point two classroom observations, sixty one thirty point seven animal dissection, dissection alternatives, sixty one forty one point three twelve migrant students, sixty one forty six point one student assessment, sixty one sixty one point three parability of services. Um, you're, you should have in your packet the notes with the policy summary from Shipman and Goodwin explaining the reasoning why the policies, um, were recommended to be repealed or rescinded, and, uh, the Policy Committee agreed with Shipman and Goodwin and moved it forward to the board. That's why it's in your packet this evening. We also are recommending that we waive the second reading for these recissions because it's very straightforward if you read your notes. Then we also discussed, um, the following policies for rescinded replace. First policy was fifty seventy promotion acceleration retention. This policy was changed to number sixty twenty in the six thousand series and renamed to promotion and retention with revisions made. You'll see the notes in your packet. And then we discussed policy fifty ninety point nine, use of private technological devices by students. The policy itself had already been updated on June sixth of twenty-three, so we were discussing the policy with, um, first in, um, let's see my words. We were discussing the regulation. So, uh, the regulation is new. The policy was already passed in twenty-three. Um, and we were making them work together. So the regulation is new. It is in your packet. We don't vote on the regulation because that is something that Dr. Cook makes for us. Thank you, Dr. Cook. Um, uh, so I, I don't know if the policy itself is in the packet, but it was already passed. We're not doing anything to the policy. Just read and review the regulation. If you have any issues with the regulation, we can discuss it. Then we discussed policy fifty one twenty point four point three point four, Title Nine of the Education Amendments of nineteen seventy-two, prohibitions of sex discrimination and sexual harassment. This policy is changed to fifty one twenty point five, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment. The revised policy and its revised updated regulation were discussed and reviewed. And again, we don't vote on the regulation, but we will be voting on the policy, but not tonight. It's a first read tonight. So fifty seventy, fifty one twenty point four point two point four, and the next one, forty one sixteen point one, are all a first read for you this evening, not an action made of. Policy forty one sixteen point one, sexual harassment. This policy and its associated regulation are renamed prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment. Revisions were discussed. They are in your packet. Regulation is for your review.
And there we go.
Yeah, we have one for, we met, uh, Thursday, September twelfth. It was our opening meeting, uh, went around the room, bring people there. I will go through all names, the school districts there. And basically they started the meeting with, uh, the Maureen Science Magnet School principal presented to people, the teacher and the A para, the teacher of the year awards, and that was very nice. That's, that's where we spent most of the, uh, of, of our meeting. And then we always have, of course, the executive director, Dr. Ryan Dowler. He did his presentation on the perspective of this year's, where we'll see where it goes. Our meeting this Thursday.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Okay. Thank you. All right. So moving right along. Uh, I'd like to, um, well, I actually have a ten. Just, just needed to discuss the proposed administrative regulation for policy fifty ninety point nine, use of private technological devices by students. Yes. So as, as Diane said, we, um, are able to issue administrative breaks without board approval, but we always run them by policy and then ultimately the board, uh, to make sure that they're in alignment and there's nothing, you know, uh, and they always are connected to a policy. And so, um, we wanted to share the, um, proposed administrative break, especially being on, um, in fact, it was, uh, cell phones and that's getting a lot of attention to kind of, uh, uh, just kind of, uh, codify what our current practice is. Um, and, you know, I think that this will be a year of review and, and, and monitoring of where that is right now. Uh, my thought is that, um, you know, we, we heard, you know, some great feedback from, uh, uh, parents tonight that kind of, uh, recognized that it made some changes, but also I think there's a push for us to look further. Um, and so we'll certainly do that. I think that, um, you know, wanna review the comments some more, but I, I think we probably look at a, a survey going forward potentially to get some more, um, information out there and by else more information about families where I see. And I think, you know, I think we have some other options too. I do know, I'll just share it with the board because one of the, um, charges, the takeaways, when I met with the committee, um, that, uh, Madisonville Plug Committee, you know, I told them, I said, I'm meeting with some super tenants, uh, in September that have instituted the yonder packets. Let me talk to them and see how that's, that's going. And for many of them, they weren't able to receive the packets yet, even though they purchased them for the start of school because they're such high maintenance. Um, and I'm not sure that that's the right answer for, for us. You know, I think that we'll have to, um, look at that, but I'm anxious to hear how that's going. The town board new came in and pulled in order, uh, through the districts I'd planned to talk to, and they haven't been received yet. So, um, we'll, we'll see. But I, I, we are getting some positive feedback from students and from staff about the, um, changes we made since we have pulls in at the end for this year. And so I would, uh, look to issue this administrative break. As you know, we can update the administrative breaks. So if the board ever took action or we took further action and I updated you when we had that discussion, I could issue the, the administrative break pretty much immediately. It doesn't, you know, I, I require something, you know, we would have for me, but we would have to have two votes, right? It's, uh, you know, I think that's the right way to look forward with a regulation.
We just wanted it as an agenda item. It was actually before we decided to have the public forum because we wanted it to be something that the board could openly discuss, and then it would invite, um, public comment and, and the public view what our current policy is. But I, I would like to, um, just like highlight a couple of things on the regulation, just listening to the comments that were made, um, by the public. When you came up with the regulations, I know that you discussed with the administration, the, um, the different levels within the cell phone policy. If you review the regulation, you can see that pre-K to five, and it was meant that it was done that way on purpose so that it's ready going forward for next year when it's pre-K to five. So it encompasses sort of a, you know, multiple schools this year. So it's pre-K to five and then the middle school, six to eight, and then the high school, nine twelve. And it's different levels of, um, cell phone restriction. And so I wanted to comment one that when somewhere, some people were saying that you should talk directly to the teachers and administrators you do, Dr. Cook does. And so when he came up with these regulations and the same with the policies that are in the student handbooks, this wasn't like, you know, Dr. Cook just came up with it on his own. So, you know, we do have input, not only from Shipman and Goodwin, our lawyers and state statute, how they're recommending what their recommendations were for adopting a policy, which we already had done. Um, but also from our administrators and our teachers, the input is all there. And then, um, just noting that because I don't know if a lot of parents that were here tonight, um, you know, they have children that are at different levels. And so if you have a child who's in, you know, a, a K to four school. And so if you have a child who's in, you know, a, a K to four school, you may be completely unaware of what the middle school policy is or the high school policy is. Is because it doesn't actually concern you at the moment. Um and, and they are different. And then Dr. Cook and I had discussed. Um and the policy committee, when we were talking about the regulations and the policy, was that, you know, if you look at the pre K to five. Uh it actually says they're discouraged from bringing cellular phones and devices to school. Um but it's also on the school bus. And then we also discussed that there's really no way for us to enforce this. We, we're not asking bus drivers to be like. Put that phone away, you know. And so I, I would say, being devil's advocate, that parents tell your children what the rules are and enforce them at home. Um, you know, your kids will listen to you hopefully, um because we don't want the teachers being the administrators of policing the cell phone policy. So I, I totally get what they're saying. On one hand, you know, you want your kid to have a cell phone. On the other hand, you don't want them to use it. So um, been there, done that. But at the same time, if you don't want your child to use a cell phone, don't give them one. Don't let them bring it to school. That's an option. And I'm putting that out there because instead of laying everything on our district and saying, make a good policy and enforce it. As parent, I know you gotta do that at home as well. And so I think it's a cooperation between the parents. And the schools and the administration and the Board of Ed, everyone's doing their best, but I think that everyone needs to take partial responsibility as well. So what will be our, what will be the next step?
I think, I think it's uh, in my opinion, it's, it's to follow how this is going, as I shared, you know, we. We uh typed things up and then to get more input. So one of the things I struggle with is to take a more restrictive stance, specifically at the high school. When our high school students have done everything we asked them to do up to this point. So last year, when we were last year, our super. Um, they, they were lax, but this year, as we've been more restrictive, they've been more restrictive. I've noticed the difference in the um. And I think we have other steps maybe in between even um, you know, so I, I, I think it's just really to monitor where, where we're at. The state may take it up again, and maybe the state looks to um, you know, pull and put a full out restriction. That was Lamont's um, you know, direction that he was, he was looking at.
Right, and what'd you do as a survey, you said?
A survey to get, you know, because I, I think, you know, and, and we, we heard in writing, and then at least one parent spoke about, you know, uh not changing the policy. But I think often tonight brings out parents mostly interested in the thing of the cell phone. So I think that that's uh, but, you know, as I, as I shared, the group has been. Um very um kind but sharing information. We've got good meetings with them. They've communicated directly with some of our principals. I mean, it's really been um good. I've learned a lot, we've shared. You know, I think that we would like to even look at maybe some joint. Um efforts to educate the public, provide, you know, we've done internet safety before, and it hasn't always brought out. Um a large crowd, so maybe partnering with uh them on that could be pretty helpful. Um, you know, so we're, we're looking at some things we can. Work together on. And they, you heard from uh several of them tonight, they're like, well, maybe consider for the budget. So they're talking about a year from now. They're not talking about.
Yeah.
You know, a student something for, for November one. And I was glad Diane said the bus thing too, because I know that was mentioned. We could never ask bus drivers to do anything more than they already doing, especially with cell phones. So I think once a student leaves the school, whether it's sitting out front. Walking around, you know, or, or on the bus, I think that we cannot really articulate that. We can't regulate that. I mean, if we have an issue on the bus with a cell phone, principal's dealing with it, but they're dealing with it retroactively, you know, they're unable to succeed.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that um I greatly appreciate everybody who came out tonight to the public input session right before this meeting. And other, I honor and respect um and, and understand. Um and empathize with the position that Madison Youth Unplugged is taking as an organization. Um it's a difficult situation, but I, I think as a board, um first of all, it's important that we for now take a position. Um of allowing the administration through regulation rather than policy to experiment a little bit here and to gain a little bit more experience. I think we are, um we place the, the administration has placed the fulcrum where it needs to be for now. And, and like Craig said, like Dr. Cook said, um reassess down the road. But I also feel um that, you know. One of the charges we have as a board is to prepare students for um the jobs and the world. And the colleges that they're gonna enter after they graduate from, from our care. And one of the things that we have to recognize is that. Um, you know, the, the mobile phone, the, the, you know, the watch, whatever, it's technology. Um, technology can be both good and bad, you know, like we're learning about AI right now. Um and how to grapple with that. And as we're trying to, you know, I think we're trying to get our arms around um how to. Um limit the negative aspects of that technology. And at the same time, allow our students to benefit from the technology so that they're not left behind. When they get to the next stage of their life after graduation. And so um, you know, I think we need to recognize. That it may be social media that is more problematic than the actual phone, even when you're talking about the dopamine hit of. You know, the phone dinging and you have to go look at it. It's not really the phone itself. It's what you're, it's the message you're expecting to get. When you get that notification that creates the dopamine hit. Um and so, you know, I think we, we need to be careful to make that distinction. And I think we might even have, and I think Stephen, um Gail, you know, there may be a way of looking at this. Um where um we have a responsibility as a board in the district um toward um. Digital, teaching our, our, our graduates digital citizenship, like we do with trying to help them understand. How to um be critical consumers of information online. So, you know. Again, long story short, I think it's good that we keep it a regulation for now. Um but I do think we owe it to our students to consider more than just the immediate backlash. From the Jonathan Haidt book and from lived experience, truly, you know, I, I have three daughters. And believe me, I understand what social media and the mobile phones um can cause a lot of uh chaos. But at the same time, I think we kind of also have to look at the other side of it. And uh maintain an even keel as a board in recognizing our overall duty holistically to our students.
Thank, thank you, sir. Diane?
I just have uh two points. The first is that the, if you read the policy, the policy is more about digital use expectations. About the expectation of privacy when you're utilizing school resources, about uh cyber bullying, et cetera. And then the regulation is completely separate. The regulation is more about the actual use of the cell phones, et cetera, in schools. So they, they kind of cover two different aspects of the same thing. And so we, you, you're right, we, we have the regulation to do one, but we still need the policy to do the other. That's my first point. My second point is that um, and, and I do agree that the current generation has much more difficulty. In their um social interactions in person, but I would have to say anyone who has listened in or sat in on the um curriculum and student development. Um committee, if you've listened to the presentations, these kids are doing, they're not in, in the classroom. They are doing social interactions. They are discussing, they are presenting opinions, they are having arguments and counterarguments, and they're doing it in respectful ways. And I. My daughter was very informative um for all the classes that she took. I really knew what was going on in the courses that she took. When she went to school here, which she's graduated now. Anyway, so I have to say that I know from firsthand experience through her that. This is happening in the classes. It's, they are communicating, they are learning the social interaction. Whether or not they're carrying that to their outside world through, you know, athletics or clubs or their, you know, personal interactions with their friends is another story. We don't regulate that, but they are getting that in our curriculum, and I just wanted to say that.
I agree with a lot that has been said. I agree with Diane. Um, you know, this falls in a number of wheel, not just the school, certainly parents and others. But I would make this connection. We as a board, if there's one thing that we have prioritized over the last couple of years, it has been. The mental health and the well-being of our students based on the reports that we've gotten from Madison Youth Family Services. The correlation in terms of the timing and the incredible increase in, in anxiety and depression and suicidal. You know, has been a relatively short-term increase that, you know, more and more research speaks to beyond just COVID. So is it a crisis? It is absolutely in a crisis and one that needs our attention. Increasingly, we're seeing correlations that the causes of this is the significant changes that happen in society. And a huge part of it is social media, particularly for young women and so forth. Now, that being said, you know, does that make me an advocate? You know, for, you know, immediate restrictive policies? No. Having been a high school principal for years and years, I see an opportunity thrust. I agree with you. I mean, our students continue to demonstrate that they're extraordinary. This is a real issue. It is one they are suffering under. And they're getting casualties, but they are also a tremendous resource. This is an, an issue. That should be very firmly put back with students and have their voice and their participation, you know. Along with their education in terms of how do we address this? You know, if I sit here concerned, I mean, I would like. To do a visit to the lunchroom at Daniel Hand and see what we see. If we see interaction or whatever, but beyond the adults and the board taking that, that's a conversation with students. For us to share with them, this is our worry. This is our concern. This is the data we're getting from Madison Youth and Services. This is what students are telling us. How do we as a community tackle this problem in a way that is going to impact it? Because, you know, my fear is we look out and we go, we've got a mental health crisis, but we're not sure why. And so what we're gonna do is gonna have more support soon, you know, and what we really should be looking at is what is causing this? And how do we as a community? Address it. And that's what, that's what the community is telling us, you know, we got a big issue. You know, do I think schools are gonna solve it? No, but we have a partner that.
All right, thank you. That was good. I'd like to thank Dr. Cook for a break off all responsible.
How expensive are those pouches?
Hey, so I, I've been told, I, I know, I'm very familiar with how they work. Um, been on the website, things like that. Never asked for a quote, but um. Madison Youth uh unplugged told me they estimated it to be forty thousand dollars for us.
But is it necessary to get that brand and that, like, it felt like, like, I've seen other schools do, like. The kids have a pouch and it, and it gets put into a basket in the morning and it has their name on it. They know their pouch. I mean, does it have to be the yonder pouch?
I think there's other options for us. I mean, the, so middle school kids use lockers. They use lock lockers. High school kids, this has changed. They don't use lockers anymore.
No.
Uh but they all are assigned a locker, so we could ask them to lock in the locker, you know, I think that's an option. So um, I think.
But you get a huge pushback from that, though.
That might be different. Yeah, I think there's something about keeping it on, you know, but then also it's still vibrant, you know, um.
Quite very yonder. It's on them.
Yeah, so they have their own. So you, you come in with your, your own pouch that says Kathy on it. Put your phone in it, gets locked as you walk through the security desk in the morning.
God. Does it prevent receiving signal?
No.
So they're getting, sort of getting virus-dupled.
Yeah, we're told to put it off, you know, or, or uh, you, but, yeah.
Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah, and you can, and you only can unlock it at a machine, so you might have them different areas, different exits or something like that. Interesting, so, so.
Interesting.
It could cause more anxiety if you hear your phone buzzing or feel your phone buzzing and you can't get into it, so.
I don't know. I think there, I think it's, it's worth looking at, like, there's, I'm sure by the time we're ready to. Yeah, building the other things, all kinds of stuff. Yeah, so I just thought like that.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm done, Gail.
All right, that was a good discussion. Um, all right, next up is, we need a motion to waive the second reading and rescinding of policies. That were previously discussed, and I'll just list them quickly. Sixty eighty point two one bilingual instruction. Sixty eighty point twenty-one dot point one English learner students, sixty eighty point twenty-four point two magnet schools. Um sixty eighty point two five early childhood education, sixty eighty point two five two school readiness, sixty one ten point two classroom observations. Sixty one thirty point seven animal dissection dissection alternatives, sixty one forty one point three one two migrant students. Sixty one forty six point one student assessment. And lastly, sixty one sixty three, sixty one sixty one point three comparability of services.
So.
So move Diane, we have a second.
Second that.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, so do we rescind those policies? Do we have a discussion on the matter? Uh here and then we'll call it for a vote. Uh all in favor?
All right.
Okay, names, abstentions, motion carries unanimously, nothing. Thank you. Um, here's a bit, here's a nice motion to make. Uh a motion to approve a very generous donation from the Jeffrey PTO. Jeffrey Elementary School, the amount of ten thousand dollars to support field trips and subscriptions.
So move second.
All right, thank you, Emily and Diane. Um, any discussion or recognition?
Thank you, PTO. Wow, that's amazing, like heart raising. That's an amazing contribution.
Right, right, definitely. Uh so all in favor?
I.
All right.
Oppose, none, stands, no, okay, nothing. Um, next up would be a motion um to approve the minutes of September third, twenty twenty-four Board of Education meeting. Thank Emily. Second. Thank you, Steve. Um, I hope you forgive me before I go to session. Diane? Good, okay.
I'm gonna abstain, you know, that'd be early, so.
All right, all in favor?
I.
All right.
Oppose, none, motion carries.
Stay.
Good stay, thank you.
Send.
Send it, Thursday.
Seven zero one.
There we go. Um. All right, um, we have a motion. Could we please have a motion to approve the minutes of the September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four Board of Education meeting?
So move second.
Yeah, Steve.
All right, Steve. Diane? Um, would anybody like to make corrections for the record or discuss anything?
No.
Here is that, all in favor?
I.
All right.
Thank you. Propose, none, intentions, none, motion carries, nothing. Our next item number fifteen is a motion to approve the minutes of the October first, twenty twenty-four Board of Education retreat.
So.
Diane?
Second, Emily, thank you.
Um, are there any discussion?
That was good.
That was a very good meeting, right? Thanks for having me.
Yeah.
Um, all right, all in favor?
I.
All right.
I abstain.
Oh, thank you.
Me too.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion carries uh six, two with two of them. Thank you very much. And uh are there any future agenda items that people would like to bring to attention? Email is always open. Um, next up would be a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Thank you, Diane.
Okay.
Second, Kathy. The meeting is adjourned at nine forty.
Um, all in favor? So, all in favor? Aye. Aye.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you, Southern.